Welcome to the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities Awards Ceremony. I'm Kathleen Cairns. I've been hosting this for quite a few years now, and it's so exciting to see the winners, the people being honored, who have really put in a tremendous amount of work helping people with disabilities throughout Baltimore County. Now we'll move on to the awards.
Hi, I'm Douglas Smith, Chair of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities. Thank you for tuning in and taking the time to learn about the commission and the people we are honoring through this year's awards program. The commission is dedicated to fostering knowledge, awareness, and recognizing the contributions of people with varying abilities in our community. Every year, the awards program provides new insights and new inspirations. I'd like to take a moment and offer a special word of thanks to two wonderful friends and commission members, Terry Parrish and Ben Dubin. Terry and Ben stepped down from their leadership positions on the commission as Chair and Vice Chair in the fall of 2023. For 24 years, Terry and Ben gave themselves and led the commission with compassion and tireless dedication. The disability community is stronger and wiser thanks to their efforts. So our commission is growing, we're energized, and we're eager to continue our role as advocates. We believe in the value of new ideas and new perspectives. Our regular meetings are listed on the county website and are always open to the public. So I encourage you to check us out and feel free to attend. So sit back, relax, we really hope you enjoy this awards program, and we look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
With heartfelt gratitude, Baltimore County extends its sincere congratulations to Terry Parrish for receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award for the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities. For more than two decades, Terry Parrish has exemplified the finest tradition of voluntary public service in her capacity as Chair of the County Commission on Disabilities. Citizens across the state of Maryland have benefited from Terry's tireless, uncompromising advocacy. Terry has freely accepted an impressive array of responsibilities in striving to open new doors of opportunity for people with disabilities from all walks of life. Baltimore County commends Terry for leading the establishment of the Alliance of Commission on Disabilities, a statewide advocacy organization, and for pursuing partnership opportunities with the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Administration. Terry played a vital role in advancing housing policy by vigorously advocating for passage of the Home Act. It's a goal that was realized in 2019. Furthermore, during Terry's tenure as Commission Chair, Baltimore County initiated the Housing Accessibility Modification Program, enabling hundreds of households to benefit from accessibility modifications to their homes. Baltimore County applauds Terry's steadfast dedication to the welfare and independence of people with disabilities and her outstanding record of achievement during 24 years of service as the Chair of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities.
During American Education Week, when my daughter was in elementary school, I realized that two of the classes I couldn't get to, this school was old, but it was not accessible, it was down some steps. So at that point, I guess a light bulb went off, and I thought, how many other people aren't going to be able to visit their children? So that's when I got the motivation and the idea to challenge and work with people as far as making our schools accessible. At that point, the school board was having people over for dinner meetings, and they invited the commissioners, and we went over one evening, had dinner, and at that point, I made it aware to the superintendent that accessibility for the schools was an issue. And he sort of diverted to, it's not really our problem to resolve, but then I met with his assistant superintendent twice, and she came back and said, you know, we do need to make these schools accessible. And at that point also, we started talking to our legislators to seek funding from the state. What happened first was, there were two people that were assigned to survey every school, and a matrix was developed, and they decided to do the elementary schools first, which was a massive amount, and then the middle schools and high schools. So that once the matrix was developed, that we knew what we needed to do, and then the legislators from Baltimore County went to the state to secure the funding. It's been interesting in a good way, and not so good way sometimes, being a wheelchair user. I went with some friends one time to a restaurant. We went to a shop first, and then after the shop, we're going to go up the street, up the sidewalk, to a restaurant. And while we were going up, we realized that one of the pavers looked like it was a different color, and we didn't think anything of it. Well, I went through the paver, and it was wet cement, and I just went right down in the cement. They proceeded to pull me out, went to the restaurant, got all the cement out of my wheels, had a nice lunch, came back here, got in the elevator in the building where I live, and the elevator broke. So at that point, I had called on the emergency phone and asked that someone come help me because I was in an elevator that was not working. And I said, and by the way, I'm in a wheelchair. Well, that sort of set the alarms off. So it was a good learning experience for everyone because they brought over what's called an evacuation chair and got me up to my condo. People that work in public service or education don't often get the recognition that they should get. So during one of, during the awards ceremony that year, I recognized the firefighters and the police officers that did get me up from the floor. When the Home Act came into fruition, and they were going to vote on it, it was important for me to speak up, whether it was county council or to the county executive, saying, people with disabilities want to live among other people, friends, neighbors, and they don't want to be sectioned off in just one area, and that they could be part of the community. And that was something that was really important to me, that a lot of us went to testify for that, and it was a success. And I really enjoyed doing this for as long as Ben and I did. I think we had a lot of good accomplishments and created a positive atmosphere for people in the county as far as them viewing people with disabilities.
With heartfelt gratitude, Baltimore County extends its sincere congratulations to Benjamin Dubin for receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities. For more than two decades, Ben Dubin has exemplified the finest tradition of voluntary public service in his capacity as Vice Chair of the County Commission on Disabilities. Ben consistently contributes to the commission's understanding of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the related laws. Ben closely monitors activities of the Federal U.S. Access Board, which promotes equality for people with disabilities through leadership in accessibility design. Ben frequently shares newsworthy items from the Access Board with all the commission members. Ben is especially attuned to the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing. Ben recently took steps to ensure that vital meetings sponsored by the county include closed captioning. Baltimore County applauds Ben's reliable dedication to the welfare and independence of people with disabilities and his outstanding record of achievement during 24 years of service as Vice Chair of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities.
I really became an expert as an advocate, a lot because of my daughter, who's profoundly deaf, and trying to traverse the IDEA, the Education Act, for individuals with disabilities. And then just seeing different places, venues we would go to that weren't accessible, whether they didn't have open captioning, or they didn't have ramps for people to get to, or sign interpreters for individuals, his lacked accommodations. And so in order to be an advocate, you have to know the law. And I guess fortunately, over the years, with my daughter, we would testify before legislation, state legislation, and some of the county, and my daughter at the age of 11 testified before U.S. House of Representatives and the U.S. Senate. And I guess because of that experience, being with her, seeing what you need to do to be an advocate, and you need to know the law to be able to, it's a civil rights, ADA is a civil rights law, and if you know the law, then you can argue a position. We made some changes to curriculum and education, brought in family life education with Mary Scott, who chaired the committee and was very active in seeing that that took place. We tried to see that curriculums that individuals who did not have disabilities, were not in IEPs, that they received the same curriculum, if it had to be in a modified means, that they got the same curriculum. We worked with school construction to make sure that the schools were all fully accessible. Over the years, we've worked with Parks and Rec, so that their parks, specifically, I visited one day, Lake Rowan, and the county had just taken it over on lease from the city of Baltimore, and they had a beautiful boat ramp, but there was no way to get to the boat ramp. So we made a few phone calls, and it became an accessible boat ramp. Progress is being made. The question always comes up, well, what's the cost of making this accommodation, and why should we spend all this money for one or two people? And that's an argument unfortunately that we get, you know, on occasion. There's been a big change in philosophy. Baltimore County is much more accessible today than what it was, you know, 24 years ago. There's still room for improvement. People still forget little things that you need to do to make accommodations. So they've got to be reminded when an event takes place, you know. It would be nice if people had a checklist of what they need to do before they have a function or event, but they don't always think about that. They don't think about the person in a wheelchair who needs a ramp to get up to a stage. And the commission itself, we were very specific over the years, having our luncheons that they had to demonstrate that they had a fully accessible hall, whether it be the restrooms or ramps to get up to a stage. So, you know, it's a matter of education. I think what the commission has done over the years, we've educated community, educated library about making their facilities accessible. I think the community has to be tolerant, they've got to be aware of needs, not everybody, you know, has the same abilities. And so tolerance is one thing, that you have to make modifications for individuals that perhaps have severe learning disabilities. You've got to take the time, it might take a little longer for somebody to get there, to walk if they're using a wheelchair or walker, but, you know, the accommodations and tolerance and understanding of individuals with disabilities, it's just, it's, you know, it might take somebody with a disability five times as long to get someplace. If you have a mobility issue, whether it be a walking or trying to feed yourself, it takes longer. And one thing that we've learned is that nothing about us without us. A lot of times, I've been on committees over the years where there hasn't been, we deal with individuals with disabilities and service and the like, but the committee does not include an individual with a disability. And you get a totally different perspective from the individual who is living through it on a day-to-day basis and challenges. We might think we understand everything that they're going through, but we don't. I constantly get reminded by my daughter about little things, about being deaf, profoundly deaf. And so we've got to have a, you know, a team that's made up of both able-bodied individuals as well as those with disabilities to get our message out.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities expresses its sincere congratulations to Amy Flack for receiving the Teacher of the Year Award. For more than two decades, Amy Flack has dedicated her talents to educating students with special needs, first at Winfield Elementary School and then at Perry Hall Elementary School. Amy consistently embraces new innovative teaching techniques, enhancing the school system's curriculum, and ensuring that her students receive the highest level of instruction. Amy has provided outstanding leadership in special education, mastering management principles, while exhibiting empathy and sensitivity in accommodating the needs of her students. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Amy Flack for receiving the Teacher of the Year Award.
When I started teaching 28 years ago, I taught in a general education classroom, and I had some students with disabilities in my classroom, and I worked very closely with the special educator. When I decided to leave and transfer to a different school, there was a position available in a self-contained classroom, and with my experiences and working and co-teaching with the special educator, they offered me the position. And I just kind of fell into it from there. I got my, I started teaching in a classroom. Special education is always a constant pendulum swinging back and forth. I think the greatest change that I've seen in my years is the move towards the least restrictive environment. When I started teaching special education, Baltimore County had a lot of self-contained classrooms. They really pushed for the least restrictive environment, and they did away with some programs. And having students included in with their non-disabled peers is very beneficial. I see it in their social interactions, I see it in their communication, their social skills. They are exposed to more of the curriculum when they're included, and it is beneficial for most students. There still is a small population of students that struggle, but overall, the move towards the least restrictive environment is the greatest. Another training that Baltimore County has offered over the years has been Orton-Gillingham. I've seen in my years of students struggling with reading, and when I started in special education, dyslexia was kind of a taboo word. You didn't talk about dyslexia. We were encouraged to just recognize it as a reading disability. But Orton-Gillingham is a very systematic approach, a phonological approach to reading, writing, and spelling. And the county has done a phenomenal job of getting numerous individuals in the school system trained to work specifically with students with dyslexia so that they can be successful in reading. I have had the privilege of working with so many different students over my 28 years, and I've made sure that the parents know that it's a team effort, you know, as they say, it takes a village. And I want the parents to feel like I'm advocating for their child and I'm advocating for them. Recently, I had a parent reach out to me of a student that I taught many years ago, and they needed some advice and some assistance for how to move forward with preparing their child for high school. And it's just very touching and rewarding to me when I have families that know that I have the best interest of their child now and in the future, and that they can use me as a resource and call upon me at any time. COVID took away a lot of the interpersonal relationships that our students gain in an inclusion classroom. They have struggled to learn how to interact with their peers, they have struggled to learn how to interact with adults. It was unfortunate that they missed many early learning opportunities when they were home to build those social skills that our little kids need. And we're seeing that now in our elementary schools in the fourth and fifth grade years. You know, those are the students that were impacted when they were in kindergarten and first grade with COVID. They're still struggling to maintain friendships, to use their calming strategies, recognize when their bodies are starting to become tense or aggravated, learning or knowing how to apply, recognize and apply the techniques to keep them calm and safe in school so they can be successful and learn. Many people have very negative experiences, thoughts and feelings towards special education. I want our community to recognize that everyone is unique, everyone learns differently, everyone has their own path to success. Special education is a service that will help support our students in their unique learning and their own pathway to success.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities expresses its sincere congratulations to Gordon Donovan for receiving its Employee Award. Following the COVID-19 pandemic, Gordon Donovan began a journey toward employment. He expressed his interest in working to staff of the National Center on Institutions and Alternatives. NCIA provided guidance and coaching during day programming activities. Gordon spoke clearly and honestly about his desire to overcome challenges and take steps necessary to enter the workforce. Gordon wanted to work in a retail environment where he could contribute by stocking shelves. Gordon accepted a voluntary opportunity stocking shelves at Habitat for Humanity Retail Center. With an improved resume in hand, Gordon was later hired by the Family Dollar Store. Gordon recently increased the work hours and celebrated a full year of part-time employment. On behalf of its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Gordon Donovan for receiving the Employee Award.
I wanted to prove, I wanted to prove them people wrong, I could keep, I could keep a job. They would, they would tell me, some people would tell me, oh, you're not going to keep a job, you're going to quit, and as soon as you get one paycheck, you're going, you're going to quit. So that, that pushed me.
Right.
I like, I like, I like proving people wrong.
Okay. And it's good to have a job, do you think?
Oh, yeah. I like money.
So the Career Development Center is basically staged to provide rehabilitative skills for individuals. So we meet people where they're at and then work to hopefully gain improvement in skills, whether it's social skills, work employment, volunteerism, anything that they need to do to make their lives more meaningful and person-centered. So everybody has a different goal in mind, and we try to meet them where they're at and then take them to the next level.
What do you think about having a year and a half of steady work under your belt?
I feel like I met my goal. That was one of my goals, to hold a job for a year and a half.
Did you work at Habitat for Humanity for a while?
Yeah.
What did you do for them?
I basically put stuff on the shelves, and that's what, that's what made me decide I wanted to do retail, because I had never done retail before. So I was like, I wanted to try it.
And how did it work out once you tried it? Did you like doing it? Did you want to keep doing it?
Um, yeah. I told, I basically told Michelle what I wanted to do. She said, she was like, are you sure? I'm like, yeah, I want, I want to earn some money.
Gordon and I went down and met with Mr. Al personally, and I think that really carved the difference. When you're filling out an application online and you're not making that connection with the store, because sometimes we really have to carve in a position. You know, a lot of the companies in the area want somebody to be able to do all of the tasks that are required of the store. So it may be, you know, running a register and doing things that sometimes our folks might not be able to do. So we want to find a way to get them through the door and find another path that says, hey, you know, he might not be able to run a register, but Gordon's great at doing, you know, X, Y, and Z. So then we come in, we met with Mr. Al, he told us to go ahead and do an application online, we did the application online. We didn't really hear any follow-up, so we went back down to Mr. Al personally, Gordon and I went back down there and said, hey, we did the application, can you pull his name? Can you look at it? Is there anything else you need us to do? And then he went ahead and scheduled us an interview. So we prepped Gordon for the interview, he went back down and interviewed with him, and basically said, yeah, I'm willing to give this a try. And so we carved out two days a week initially for Gordon to kind of get in there, get familiar. We provided the job coaching that he needed to make sure that he was successful. And then we, you know, we work on those skills while he's there, and he's been successful ever since.
I love it. They, at the time, a guy, Mr. Al, hired me, he gave me a chance. And ever since, ever since, ever since he gave me a chance, I've, everybody, everybody loves me there. They ask me to do something, I'll do it.
That's great. So you're, you're an important part of the team there.
Yeah, like if one of my, the people on my team come for a visit, they always get a good report.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities expresses its sincere congratulations to Isaac Douglas for receiving its Advocate Award. Isaac Douglas has taken bold action to improve his life, achieving independence from public assistance, and becoming a role model for Baltimore County Self-Sufficiency Program. Isaac sought professional assistance in how to become employed, save money, pay off debts, and purchase a home. He attended motivational workshops, homeownership counseling sessions, and received guidance from the Maryland Division of Rehabilitation Services. Isaac succeeded by embracing new learning and advocating for himself and his family. He proudly leads his family by example and is striving to purchase a home. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Isaac Douglas for receiving the Advocate Award.
Isaac had reached out to the Family Self-Sufficiency Program to find out what it was about, and my financial person, staff person, Mr. Austin, wanted me to meet Mr. Douglas. And he informed us that he was hearing impaired, but we didn't feel like that was a problem because Mr. Douglas didn't feel like that was a problem. He said he could do anything anybody else, and he wanted goals set, and he wanted to achieve them like anyone else.
It gave me ideas and thoughts of how, where I want to be at. So I said, let me just go ahead and do it, and then when I got my foot in the door, and then I liked it, and I said, okay, I can do a little bit more. And then I just kept on going, the years go by, and I felt confident, I built my confidence up. And I said, you know, let me just keep on going till, you know.
Did this program help you find a job?
Yes.
How so? What kind of job did you find?
HFAT, home improvement, stuff like that. So I like working with my hand, you know, get out the weather, all year weather, seasonal weather.
So are you busy these days doing that kind of work? Are you busy?
Yeah, I'm doing, I'm doing that kind of work now and trying to get a little bit more knowledge and skill with it.
HUD created the Self-Sufficiency Program because they, they knew there were individuals receiving Section 8 back in the 1990s that were working people. And they also knew there were individuals that could do better for themselves and their families if they knew where resources and services were in their community. So they established the Family Self-Sufficiency Program and housed authorities across the nation, and the goal of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program is to go out into the communities and seek partnerships to bring the families' resources and services, to educate the families on what's in their communities that can benefit, benefit them to have better lives. He is very determined. He is very determined and I learned that he's a strong man and he doesn't let optical stand in his way regardless of his disability. And I think he sets example for other participants on our program who have disability, whether they're physical or mental or, you know, I think they now see that we have watched him excel, that they can excel as well.
I want to continue the process. I want to continue learning. I want to keep building. I want to see with all the staff, the office, to compare the topic, the better.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities expresses its sincere congratulations to Bon Appetit at St. Timothy's School for receiving the Employer Award. Bon Appetit has demonstrated its commitment to providing opportunities to Baltimore County residents from all walks of life by hiring 13 individuals with disabilities to staff its food service program at St. Timothy's School in Stevenson. Bon Appetit worked closely with Chimes, a nonprofit, to learn about its employment programs. Bon Appetit embraced the opportunity to bring people with disabilities into a robust kitchen and cafeteria operation. The hired individuals receive drop-in coaching from Chimes as needed while keeping the kitchen organized, clean and well-stocked with food and supplies. On behalf of all its citizens, Baltimore County is proud to honor Bon Appetit at St. Timothy's School for receiving the Employer Award. Congratulations again to all the recipients. We are so excited to honor you as you move forward in your lives and helping people with disabilities. On behalf of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities, thank you for joining us at this awards ceremony.